All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is December 5th, 2023, and the time is 9:33. I'd like to, we'd like to invite up to the podium Pastor Ladato for the invocation. So come on up.
We could also have a moment of silence. The past week, we had the passing of Jim Jennings, who was the second longest-term serving councilman in the City of San Pablo. He's a great asset to the City of San Pablo, Lee County. Have a moment of silence before the prayer, please. Thank you.
Father God, we just thank you for our elected officials, their leadership to this county. We thank you to give wisdom and guidance. Father, we know with you, all things are possible. Without you, we could do nothing. But, Lord, I just thank you to continue to lead them and guide them with your eye and teach them and instruct them in the way they should go. We thank you for all those that have lost loved ones. Lord, you said you mend the broken heart and you bind up every wound. So we thank you to do that, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you would please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. All right, at this time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Pendergrass for ceremonial presentation.
Great, thank you. Animal Services has come up this morning. We have a special guest in the house. This is Nash, and he's adorable. He's a park chihuahua and dachshund. Interesting mix there, but you'll see, obviously, you can tell by the elongated body there. And he's 10 months old. He's looking for a home, and you can tell in the picture, he is a very, very playful and very, very kind dog. And I'm sure we've got some Christmas specials coming out this month, Animal Services, and please let everybody know so we can get the animals some homes.
Yes, we have Empty the Shelters with the Bissell Foundation going on right now. So all adoptions are $10 with an approved application. So you can take him home for $10 right now. So who can resist that? We have our microchip clinic on the 16th, Saturday, from 11:00 to 2:00. So if you do not have your pet microchipped, best thing you could do before the fireworks going off on New Year's Eve, please come on out. If you already have your pet microchipped, come out, and we will check, make sure your information is up to date, because that's the time of year we get the most pets impounded because of the fireworks. So come out and see us. We also have our vaccine clinics. We have one set up for every month of the year next year, so check out our website and our Facebook page for that. What else do we have going on? We have a lot going on, so check out our Facebook page. Coming up, I know everybody likes our Facebook page anyway, but we have something special coming up. I won't tell you what it is, but stay tuned for our video series before Christmas. It's going to be entertaining.
That's the Christmas tree.
Oh, our Christmas tree, gift-giving tree. If you can't come out and get an ornament, we do have a QR code for our Amazon wishlist for shelter pets.
Thank you very much. This here, Nash, should be a great asset, leaving home right now.
Absolutely.
Adorable, 10-month-old chihuahua, dachshund.
He knows sit, he is so well behaved.
What would they call it? A chad-dachshund?
It's a chew-weenie.
Chew-weenie? Oh, that's cool. I didn't know it had a real thing. All right.
It's a chew-weenie. And we came up with this week, a Boston Bully, one of our cell dogs.
Oh, yeah?
We have two cell dogs that are still available. They did just graduate with the Sheriff's Office. We still have two available. So Happy is a Boston Bully, so check her out, too.
Brian, what do you think?
Oh, God.
We'll just, we'll leave him here. We'll bring the paperwork later. I'll drop it off.
I think I got the $10 for you, maybe.
We can waive it for you, it's okay.
I'll float the 10.
He was actually noticed you from the back of the room, and was, and I'm, I think he noticed it was Commissioner Pendergrass in the back of the room, so, yep.
Maybe having that talk later today.
Good luck, good luck.
We deliver, no worries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the presentation this morning. At this time, we will take up the recap. County Administration is asking to defer item A6 to a future meeting and revision to A8 and to A13.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the deferral and the revisions and corrections that are recommended on the recap.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Hammond move the item forward, and a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Do we have any objections?
Public comment.
No objections?
No objections? Do you want to do?
All right, I need to have public comment, so we'll bring it to the public for public comment. Do we have any public comment on these items? Mr. Ballard?
It's not on these items, but it is on consent agenda. That's what.
Not there yet.
No.
No. Not there yet.
Okay, so I have some cards, and unfortunately, they got handed to me late, so we're going to have to get the cards on the administrative agenda. So is it time I call these up?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Only if those cards are relevant to the motion that's on the floor, which is with regard to the revision and corrections. If not, then it would be appropriate to call the question on that motion, sir.
Just announce it, you already did that, so you're good.
Yes, so already did that, so, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any objections? Any further discussion?
Thank you.
At this time, we will begin the consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, do you have any items to pull for discussion?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Pendergrass?
I do have any pull. I do like to recognize there's a couple items, item number 21, and 22, and 55. These three items relate directly to Lee High Acres. This shows Lee, Lee County's commitment to Lee High Acres, Lee's Lee County. There's a few people that think Lee County's not doing anything to Lee High Acres, but this shows our weekly, monthly contributions to Lee High Acres, millions of dollars being spent here today. Again, thank you for all the staff work on these great items, 21, 22, and 55. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sandelli?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sandelli has no items. We will move to public comment on the consent agenda items. So I have Danny Ballard?
It's for consent agenda item eight, I believe, the lighting on a Serra Boulevard. And it's a question more than anything or comment. I know ex-mayor is here, or the mayor is here, to talk about it, and I'm not against it, but I thought, right after the hurricane, either FPNL or LCEC said...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? That, I'm sorry, this is administrative item, not consent?
Excuse me.
Apologize.
You're right. It's...
Item 54?
Yes, the drainage ditch in Lee County.
Okay.
Or in Cape Coral. The question on that one is, if that pipe, does that, I guess the pipe, does the pipe belong to the county, or does the pipe belong to Cape Coral City? If it belongs to Cape Coral City, then my question would be, why is the county paying for road repairs for a pipe that belongs to Cape Coral City that failed? If it belongs to county, I understand, but I didn't know the county had either sewer or water, and I forget what the comment was in there, what kind of pipe that is at Del Prado and 42nd? I don't remember exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to Mr. Ballard, that item is not what's called for. At this point, you're on your consent agenda. So if you could save that...
That isn't a consent.
No, sir, it's on the administrative agenda. He switched.
One of them items was in consent.
Richard, I apologize. The very first item that he spoke up, Mr. Chairman, may I? Sorry. The very first item that was addressed was on the, was on administrative agenda. The second item that he's addressing now is on the consent. And if I may answer that, that pipe does belong to the county.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. So we had the numbers wrong on both, right? Okay. All right, also on the consent agenda, Ms. Marsha Ellis.
I'm going to shut up.
Good morning, Marsha Ellis, for the record. I have a number of consent agenda items I'm concerned about, items nine, 18, 19, and 46. In very limited time to address these. First of all, let me say that concern for our water supply is, is very much on the minds of the residents, the existing residents here in Lee County, as, and informed by the Lower West Coast Water Supply Report from South Florida Water Management District that was released last year. I will point out that there are a number of permits that are seeking water use that I feel should be delayed, given the current crisis that we're in. I also want to point out that CDDs are exempt from these restrictions, and that the impacts of literally filling up lakes from aquifers has a disastrous impact on local wells in the area, and is a practice that should be suspended as well, and given further, it should be analyzed in depth. I want to say in regard to the CDBDGR, changes to any plans or acceptance of revisions as proposed, I ask that that be tabled, given opportunity to more closely examine the elements that were brought forward regarding public participation and protections for fraud, so that the members of the public have opportunity to really scrutinize in great detail the impacts of any changes, especially given the limited time to look over the recovery task force documents that were brought forth that are, that are related. And it's just too much of a burden to review those at this time and then bring forth concerns on the part of the public. I ask that those windows be extended for the task force document, as well as the participation plan and the fraud element, so that we can better anticipate how any changes impact, and give meaningful input to provide those safeguards. In regard to the last item on the solid waste diversions, that is a, a very important topic as we analyze better the impacts of enormous amounts of waste that were generated by the hurricane and the fallout from that in regard to the dioxide leak, the issue with the ash at the landfill, and any environmental impacts that have resulted from having to divert that waste stream, as well as look at the short procurement, which looks like it was only about seven days, for a $250,000 award to give more oversight on the solid waste situation, and in fact, conduct a workshop, look at it in more detail, I think is warranted. I thank you for the opportunity to bring these issues forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I do not see any other cards for the consent agenda. Does anyone else wish to speak on the items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will close for public, we will close public comment. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the balance of the items.
Okay. And I'll second. And we have a second, okay. Commissioner Hammond moves the balance of the items, and Commissioner Sandelli seconds. Do we have any objections? No objections. That concludes the consent agenda. We will move, it passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move to administrative agenda. Did a lot on this today, please bear with me. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. County Manager, please introduce item number one on administrative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to consider acquisition of five Conservation 2020 nominations, and I'd like to ask Mr. Clemens to come up and present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners, Robert Clemens, County Lands. Before you, as a request to authorize staff to proceed with acquisition activities for five parcels for Conservation 2020 acquisition purposes, four of those parcels are in the Crewe area, which is in southeast Lee County. One is on Pine Island. They are all adjacent to preserves or conservation areas. Class SAC recommended to pursue these parcels unanimously, and staff recommends to do so as well. Anyone has any questions, or?
Okay, at this time, do staff have any questions? Commissioners have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Okay, I will call for public comment. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have, okay, we have approval from Commissioner Hammond, and a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Motion to approve item by Commissioner, well, I'm sorry. Any discussion, Commissioners?
This is another great asset to our 2020 conservation program. It's been a great program for the last 24 years, so happy to support this.
Okay, seeing no objections, item is moved five to zero unanimously. Okay, item number two, Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve the 2024 board meeting calendar. This will, this will be for the end of this year and the rest of next year. This will include board meetings, zoning hearings, and budget hearings.
Move item.
Okay, any, any objections? All right, need public comment, I'm sorry. Let's move to public comment. Okay, seeing none, we will back to the board. Any questions? Okay, okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, and a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussions? No objections? Okay, item moves five to zero. Item number three, Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the Ward Design Engineering and Architectural Services contract for the new south central EMS station. I'd like to ask Mr. Gerges to present the item.
Good morning, Ehab Gerges Construction Management. This item is to approve a contract with BSW in the amount of $1,72,424 to design a new EMS station at the corner of Daniels and Tree Line. The lot is about 1.2 acres. The new EMS station will be about 6,500 square feet. It will include all the office space and meeting rooms and showers and restrooms that the EMS station will need. With your approval, we'll come back within 12 months after the design and permits are done to present a construction contract.
Okay, at this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, if you could build out the timeline for me, so apparently it says the design will take about 13 months to complete, and then what does the rest of the construction schedule look like? I mean, when, when could we estimate moving in? Take me through the whole process.
So as of now, after your approval, we'll engage a CEM construction manager that will work with the designer and us to, at the end of the design, they will provide us with a GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, and that will be presented to you after 12 months, after the design is done and permits are obtained. So within 12 months, we'll come back with a construction contract. After your approval, with that contract, will take about 12 to 14 months to finish the construction.
Okay, so we're about like two years, two years, two years? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hammond. Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I will call for public comment. Would anyone like to speak on, on this item? Okay, seeing none?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hammond. I have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? No objections. The item moves four to zero. No objections. Okay, at this time, Mr. Hunter, could you please introduce item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to accept the state legislative grant to support design of Larry Keiker Preserve, Phase One, and I'd like to ask Mr. Adalini to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners, Roland Adalini, Natural Resources. This to accept a grant from Florida Department Environmental Protection, a million dollars as part of their Florida Resiliency Recovery Program. And this will perhaps design a portion of the, the overall berm in the flood mitigation project identified in the South Lee County Flood Mitigation Study. It's about a $4.7 million design effort. This will cover about $1 million of it. You see in the, the map there, Keiker Reserve is in red, and the levee or the berm and the structures that we're talking about is delineated in orange.
Mr. Chair?
Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
Just like to add, say, this is a long-awaited project, and thank you for the state and DP for working with us. This is going to be a great asset to our region, to recognize this 4,000 acres now will be with public access, to be another jewel in Lee County.
Okay, Mr. Hunter, can we recognize?
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to emphasize that this is a legislative appropriation and a pass-through to FDUP. Just want to give that credit.
At this time?
I've got, I've got a number of calls about this, and I don't want to get the process ahead of this. You know, this has to do with the water management process and mitigation and so on and so forth. I've had a lot of calls about what's the use going to be. That'll be addressed later as we bring planning in and get public comment and all that as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
So question for either Mr. Harner or Mr. Adalini. So I see that the estimated cost for design is $4.7 million. This is a $1 million grant. What's our plan to fund that gap between 4.7 and 1 million?
I'd like to ask Mr. Salyer to respond to that question.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Hammond, the, it's a fairly complex mix of revenue streams that we have tagged for this. So we have this legislative appropriation for which we think the delegation. We also have an HMGP application pending with the state. And then third, we do have a Florida Resiliency Grant for this project as well. So if all of those, if the HMGP grant comes through, which we expect that it will, we'll actually be in the good position of being overfunded, and we'll have to manage through those, those different grants. But, but for right now, we're looking very strong.
What's your timeline on those, consideration of those grants?
Yes, sir. The Florida Resiliency Grant has already been awarded. It's approximately $7 million a year over three fiscal years. And the HMGP grant, we expect to have news probably in January from, from the state, or at least that's when we hope we'll hear that it's been awarded.
And then do we wait to actually procure the design team until we have all the money, all the grants awarded, or?
Well, we do have to comply with all of the different grant requirements for procurement. Roland, do you remember where we are on the procurement of the design?
Yeah, we are going to, now we're going to develop the scope of work for this design portion that would be consistent with the requirements for the grant, so we're going to be putting that out in the street. Until we get the formalization or the grant agreement approved, then, then we'll move forward with the actual...
But potentially like somewhere into the first quarter of next year, we'll be, we'll see it again for going out for procurement, probably?
Hopefully before that, Commissioner. So to Roland's point, they are designing the scope now. We'll have to get concurrence from the state on the bid package that we design if we get the HMGP award, which we fully expect that we will. So, so, yeah, we'll...
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to look, look at those specifics. And I agree with Commissioner Pendergrass. This is a, an amazing, amazing opportunity for the residents of Lee County, the future visitors of Lee County who will use this as well, and it will truly be a jewel for our area, as Commissioner Pendergrass said.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hammond, and you as well, Mr. Pendergrass. It is, is definitely something that we should be proud of. At this point, we have any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I will move to public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment on this item? Marsha Ellis?
Thank you. Marsha Ellis, for the record, I will echo the sentiment that it's very nice to see our county government programs coordinating with state partners, as well as federal partners as well, in the maximizing of our conservation lands for their intended purpose and in the public benefit. I know that in order to be able to evaluate the impacts of open space like conservation lands, that the state and federal partners rely on the, that our conservation land be valued and guaranteed for the future, so that we can have accurate models, et cetera, and receive those cost savings that conservation lands provide the community, as well as the public benefit in mitigating flooding. I think what's really created a bit of anxiety regarding Larry Keiker and this, this particular agenda item, is the fact that this, this, these lands have gone so long without the disclosure or the development of a management plan, even though that has come before classic time and time and time again. So there's a bit of a distrust among advocates, especially of the environment, in terms of, you know, feeling like, are we going to be blindsided by a management plan that may not have had the opportunity to be evaluated by people with environmental expertise, members of the public that utilize this space, and that there be ample time to look it over. But I do applaud the coordination, because I see this as being something that requires commitments on our part, and it's nice to see our legislators pursuing grant, grant opportunities like this to bring projects forward. Thank you.
Do we have any other further public comment? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have approval to move the motion from Commissioner Hammond, and a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Any objections? Seeing none, motion approved, four to zero. Okay, at this time, Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve a contract for Corkscrew...
Excuse me, item number five, I apologize. Item number five.
No worries, thank you. This is to approve the contract for Corkscrew Road Widening, Phase Two. I'd like to ask Mr. Price to present the item.
Morning, Commissioners, Rob Price with DOT. This, this item, agenda item number five, is to award a contract to Bergeron Land Development Incorporated for the second phase of Corkscrew Road Widening from Belatera Boulevard East to Alaco Road in the amount of just over $26.5 million. The project consists of widening Corkscrew Road to four lanes with new bicycle and pedestrian amenities, upgraded LCU water and sewer lines, drainage improvements, and a new traffic signal at the intersection of Alaco Road. We anticipate construction to begin in early 2024, and it's expected to take 24 months to complete. We're here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this time, staff, do I have any question, I mean, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Rob, thank you for this information. We had a great meeting, probably a month ago, on Corkscrew Road out there with the shores with the residents out there. So you're thinking 24 months once we start construction, because some of the concerns that we hear, and Commissioner Sandelli hears, is the safety during construction. People are concerned about access and with the roadwork being done at the same time. So the contractor, are they going to have measures in place to provide safety for interest of the current residents that live there now?
Absolutely. Will be, will be of paramount importance to maintain safety on the roadway. One of the aspects of the project is we have an accelerated timeline for the traffic signal at Alaco Road and Corkscrew Road, so that will go in prior to completion of the widening, not just on opening day.
Okay, good. That was my next question, so thank you, Rob. I know you brought that, because I've been talking about that for the last year, is that's a very busy intersection now, and with the traffic that, when there's less traffic, the high speeds that travel that road sometimes. So again, thank you for doing that. Anything you do, I know you've been doing it, your staff have been working on this really hard to, you know, speed up this process, because there's definitely a need out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pendergrass. Commissioner Sandelli?
Just a quick comment. I want to thank, Rob, you and the team and everybody. This has been a challenge in a lot of different ways, whether it's weather, whether it's all the other issues and stuff. So thank you for that. I do take a ride out there every seven to 10 days, you know, from Dan Hill Griffin all the way out and back again. Some days are better than others, but the progress is evident, and it's never fast enough. But thank you for, for the efforts that have been made so far.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandelli. Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, I will call for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on the item number five? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
Move item.
Item is a motion from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion? Okay, at this time, any objections? No objection, item moves four to zero. Okay, at this time, Mr. Hunter, please introduce item number six.
Yes, Commissioner, this item was deferred?
Item number six was deferred, I apologize. All right, please introduce item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next items, seven through 13, are all hurricane recovery items. And number seven is to launch the CDBGDR Planning and Multi-Family Rental Housing Rehabilitation Programs, and I'd like to ask Mr. Salyer to present that item.
Thank you. Commissioners, we are excited to ask you to formally launch the CDBGDR Planning Program today with publication of a Notice of Funding Availability. We understand that Lee County is the first in the country among the cohort that was awarded these disaster recovery program monies at the same time to get to this point, and we thank the board for its direction in driving us to this point. It's very exciting, and we appreciate your support. We're also asking that you authorize publication of a Multi-Family Rental Housing Repair Notice of Funding Availability. Our plan is to publish that on January 2nd. And then going forward, you will see a series of agenda items come forth, and you can see this, the tentative schedule there in front of you. And you can see the tentative schedule there in front of you. We're looking to launch a new CDBGDR program every month through April 2024. If you have any questions, I will answer those. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Hammond, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Salyer, your question about the, how are we going to publicize the Notice of Funding Availability so that, you know, eligible folks will know that they can apply for this?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, we will use the traditional media channels. We'll publish it on our website. Our communications group is preparing messages to go out. And we also maintain an Interested Parties list. And it is fairly exhaustive for the universe of eligible applicants. So, we will notify them directly.
Can you describe, like, what a successful applicant might look like, practically speaking?
For the planning, NOFA?
Well, for, yeah, for this, exactly.
Yes, sir. So, typically, for planning, it would be the county itself, any of our municipalities, could be a special district. So, whether it's Lee Health or one of the other independent special districts.
I apologize, Mr. Salyer. I was actually referring to the Multifamily Rental Housing Repair.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. So, there you'll have, so that would be owners of rental housing of five units or more. So, typically, that would be an affordable housing developer who still has damage to their units remaining from Hurricane Ian. And they would, you know, they would potentially qualify for repair funding.
Okay. So, you know, as we advertise or try to talk to the media about this, we could say if you own a unit that meets this criteria, you could apply. And there could be funding available to help you make repairs if you haven't been able to make them so far?
Yes, sir. So long as those units are going to be maintained for affordable housing.
Affordable housing, okay.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hammond, thank you. You kind of asked all the questions I wanted to know, so, great job. At this time, any other Commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, so at this time, I will open for public comment. Would anyone like to speak on item number seven? Marcia Ellis, come on in.
Good morning. Marcia Ellis, for the record. So, I have given lengthy comments regarding the revisions that have been proposed. In the Multifamily Housing Rehabilitation Program, there was a revision that has been brought forth, though not approved, and certainly needs to have some discussion about where the, previously in the initial action plan, that those properties, for consideration, were occupied by renters. Now, that has been changed. And renters do not need to occupy these houses to meet eligibility. So, that is a bit concerning because I see a bit of an erosion there. There's only a five-year control on this. So, it's only for five years that will remain affordable housing. So, I think that this is important to recognize when we bring these things forward. Are we getting durable impacts to our affordability over time? I mean, how, five years is not very long, especially, it might take you five years to get a contractor in there, as far as I'm concerned, looking at the local landscape. So, I think we're really putting the cart before the horse here. There are considerations yet that we really need to take the time and process regarding the revisions before we set this timeframe. I will say it is very helpful to actually put eyes on what a NOFA will look like. And that has been a missing piece of information for members of the public and those who are trying to advocate on the behalf of low and moderate income households who desperately need these funds. Also, there should be outreach, targeted outreach, to reach these groups. And that should really be fine-tuned and very precise at this point. Those folks should be identified so that we, as the administrators of these funds, are going in a targeted way to reach the people who qualify through eligibility through Phase One. All right? So, I think that there, while I do appreciate this information, which has been sought, being brought forward in today, I don't know that we have, are fully capable with this limited time period to get our, and the fact that we're talking about things that are still open for public comment and revision and consideration, that we're fully evaluating so that we can protect the investment of public funds and get it to people who most are deserving and impacted and qualifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Would anyone like to speak on item number seven? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve, and I'd also like to make a comment as well.
Yes, okay. Any second? Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have a, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hammond and a second by Commissioner Sandelli. And would any further discussion? Please, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that opportunity. One question for Mr. Salyer, if I may, Mr. Chairman. When does the clock start on that five-year affordable requirement?
Thank you, Commissioners. So, the affordability periods wouldn't start ticking until the project was complete. So, you know, any construction period would not be included in that timeframe. And I would also point out, it's important that we don't mix and match the affordability periods for different programs. For instance, new developments, 30 years. Some rehabs are 20 years. And then, individual homeowner units are five years. So, it's, there's a, there's a full range of affordability requirements in this program.
And thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Salyer, thank you very much for that answer and for the thoughtfulness that you put into the different timelines and the different requirements as well. And I just want to give huge kudos to Mr. Harner, Mr. Salyer, and the entire team over at the county for getting this to market as fast as you did, to mention that we are the first in the nation to reach this point. Congratulations and thank you. And I think it's just a testament to the hard work that our entire team has put forward towards this effort. And so, it was, it was a really, it was a historic $1.1 billion that we got here in Lee County as a direct allocation from the federal government. And the effort has, by our staff, has matched that historic moment. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond, any further discussion? Seeing none, any objections to the motion? No objections. Item moves four to zero unanimously. Right, Mr. Harner, please introduce item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve a grant agreement with Fort Myers Beach for Estero Boulevard Lighting. And I'd like to ask Mr. Salyo to present the item.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is to approve, well, let me step back. You'll recall that at your last meeting, we accepted a grant from FDEM from a hurricane appropriation fund that provided $100 million interest-free loan to the county. But that also included this grant as a pass-through to the town of Fort Myers Beach for turtle lighting installation on Estero Boulevard. This agenda item asks you to do two things. One, approve a sub-recipient agreement between Lee County and the town for those funds. And two, it asks you to authorize the county manager to execute any future modifications that might come about in that agreement. We do want to tell you that we have meetings scheduled with the state later this week to discuss this item, to see if they might advance fund this project so that it doesn't have to be on a reimbursement basis. So, there's just some logistics we still need to work through.
Mr. Harner, please.
Mr. Chair, also, I'd like to state that we will be inviting the mayor from the town of Fort Myers Beach, as well as the district commissioner, into those meetings as well, so that the town of Fort Myers Beach can have those discussions directly with the state.
Okay, does Commissioners have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Okay, I'll open up to public comment. I do have two cards. And the first will be Danny Ballard. He was speaking on item eight still.
Okay. As I was saying before, I thought right after the hurricane, either FPNL or LCEC said that they would put all the lighting up on Estero Boulevard for the town at no cost. Unless this one, because it is turtle-specific, I don't understand. And I understand it's state money. It's not county tax dollars. But why would this even come up if FPNL or LCEC, whichever one it was, that said they'd provide the lights free of charge? That's the only thing I'm questioning. And if it's because of being turtle-sensitive lights, they got to do something different, I understand it clearly. But if it's not, I don't understand it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballard. Also, Dan Allers?
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, for allowing me to speak in your service to our community. Just to give you a little background, obviously, I've been involved in this for almost seven years now. It's been a very, very painful process. To answer some of the questions that were just brought up, the lighting that was replaced by FPL at no cost right after the storm was a one-for-one like to an amber-friendly light that was turtle-sensitive or friendly, turtle-friendly because we were in turtle season. What we're talking about through very long negotiations with FPL is a project that will be a first-of-its-kind for coastal community that one meets the environmental aspects that are required, but also FDOT requirements, and not just for Estero Boulevard, but all of Estero Island. So, through countless meetings and talking with the state delegation, we got to this appropriation request, which they graciously gave us. To no fault of the county staffs, it has somehow fell in your lap where it is now a pass-through to the town. We always thought it was going to come directly to us to then pass through to FPL. That is not the case. After reading through FDEM's requirements or their requirements to come down to you, we understand how your staff has interpreted that this is a reimbursement. Because of some of the language, the first thing under the funding is that is a one-time upfront grant. And then, later in that, it refers to reimbursing or sending in submittals to get reimbursement. The sub-recipient contract that we received from the county is much more in-depth when it comes to reimbursement. So, essentially, again, no fault to the county at all. The way it is worded and the way the contract that we have with FPL, the town would essentially have to front almost $2 million to carry over a year that it's going to take to complete this project to then get that $2 million back. As the hardest-hit community with over 40% loss in Haverlyram, you can understand how that's going to be very much a challenge. And my fear is that that is going to completely stop this project that we've worked very, very hard on, on behalf of not just our residents, but all of Lee County residents that come down. Any of you that have had a chance to take a drive down the boulevard since the storm, I think you can admit that it's very, very, very dark. It's not FDOT-compliant by any stretch of the imagination. And now that we're coming into season, our fear is that this is going to get even worse. All the hard work we've all done, my fear is that one bad headline is going to derail a lot of work that we've all done. So, my ask for you today is to table this contract, to allow the conversations to be had. We understand it's going to delay because you don't have another meeting for a month. However, I think it's important that we get this contract right, we able to get the information from the state that allows us to move forward so that the town doesn't have to upfront this cost and carry that because that's going to put a very big burden on our residents. So, my ask is, again, please table this until we can have these conversations to clarify for your staff and our staff to be able to come back with something that helps get this. We're talking about one month here versus seven years. We've already, we can wait another month, but I think we need to get this right. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, coming back to the board. Would anyone like to make any comments or any motions at this point?
I'll make the motion.
Motion for approval?
Yes.
I'll second your motion, but I do have some comments as well.
Okay. Okay, a motion from Commissioner Sandelli and a second from Commissioner Hammond. Commissioner Hammond, you recognized?
Thank you, Chair Greenwell. Mr. Harner, I do have a question, and I know, well, so, if I'm understanding what the mayor said correctly, he's saying they would have to front $2 million, and then, they would get reimbursed for the full cost of this. This money does have to be passed through us first. So, we're guaranteed to see the money at some point. It will come through our hands. My question is, could we talk to Mr. Winton about the idea of us fronting the $2 million? I know that, obviously, we had a pretty lean year as well. But I know that the county resources are a little bit more robust than what the town of Fort Myers Beach has at its disposal at this time. That's a scenario I'd like to put out there.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Harner, please.
Yes, yes, we can. I think our next steps forward would be to have the meeting this week to hopefully get the money sent directly to us without those caveats. If there are those caveats and we have to go through the reimbursement, we believe we can handle that issue and upfront the $2 million.
Okay.
Or $2 million plus, whatever that may be.
So, in which case, you know, we just, we basically would just keep it when it gets passed down to us as opposed to sending it on to Fort Myers Beach then?
Correct. Or we could work out a plan to make sure that they're getting the funding in a timely manner to pay off that portion of the project, and we can work out our portion as we get it.
Because I'm sure my colleagues would agree. We want to do whatever we can to expedite the lights going up in a timely fashion and helping the recovery of this island from the hurricane, you know, be as expedited as possible. It's a priority for all of us. I've heard us all speak about that.
Thank Commissioner Hammond, Commissioner Sandelli.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and his team. This has been, I'll say, a labor of love, but a necessity. They've been very patient with this, and they're representative of the community, which has also been very patient with us. It's not an easy solution and involve a lot of people, so, number one. Secondly, I, we've had a number of meetings on this. And I know that we would like to just basically give the money to the town so they can go forward. The language that came through was a little bit different. We're dealing with that right now. We'll deal with it as much as we can. And we'll find a solution, be it through that process or as, Brian, as you mentioned as well. So, we're working on it hard, and we want to get it done.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandelli. At this time, County, Mr. County Attorney, could you help clarify the motion that would need to be made to be able to do that? Will we change the motion?
No, sir. The motion as directed adequately covers the board's discussion. And I just wanted to reaffirm that we certainly understand the mayor's concerns and the town's concerns. The one goal that we all share in common is this project cannot be allowed to fail. So, this is merely a matter of working out the details with a third party, which is the state of Florida. We appreciate the board's discussion about alternative interim funding if need be. And we would incorporate that into the motion as part of this discussion. But the first goal would be to work with the town and the state of Florida to get the state's language amended so that that would, that interim funding would not be possible. But the bottom line for this project, under the mayor's leadership and under Commissioner Sandelli's leadership, has been it cannot fail, and it will not be permitted to fail.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. So, at this time, we have a motion to approve item number eight from Commissioner Hammond, Commissioner Sandelli, and a second from Commissioner Hammond. Did I get that right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any objections? With no objections, item number eight moves forward.
It's like this, I said one comment. I'm sorry, I just one comment. Mayor, are you okay with that, with the motion the way it was? Because I know you didn't talk about that, so. I have some more questions, but. No, no, just yes or no, shake your head.
As long as we're all on the same page.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, Mr. Harner, please introduce item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to award a contract to replace facilities, maintenance, building number four roof. And I'd like to ask Mr. Gerges to present the item.
Good morning. Ehab Gerges Construction Management. This item is to approve a contract with CMM Roofing in the amount of $140,340 to replace building number four at Henderson Avenue, which is the operation center for facilities construction management. The building is about 9,000 square feet. The roof was damaged by Hurricane Ian. We are using FEMA Disaster Relief Fund to replace the roof, and it will take about two months to get the job done.
At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on item number nine? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
Move the other.
Second?
I have a motion to move the item from Commissioner Sandelli, a second from Commissioner Hammond. Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion? Okay, item, any objections? No objections. Item passes unanimously four to zero. Okay. At this time, Mr. Harner, please introduce item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to award a contract for various boardwalk repairs. I'd like to ask Mr. Gerges to present the item.
Good morning. Ehab Gerges Construction Management. This item is to approve a contract with Johnson Engineering in the amount of $1,799.59 to design 14 sites, boardwalks that was damaged by Hurricane Ian. The sites will take about two years to design and permit. However, we are going to ask the designer to focus on three or four sites so we can get this finished, put this out for bed, and get this construction starting ASAP. So, we'll get this phased for construction so we can get these sites back for the public use as soon as possible.
Thank you. Commissioners, this time, we have any questions for staff? Commissioners, this time, we have any questions for staff?
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So for the folks at home and even myself who are looking at this and saying, if we're just replacing what was there, why do we have to go through design again?
Some of these sites are completely gone, so it's not just a repair, it's a complete reconstruction. And the sites that needs repairs, we need construction document with the specs to, in order for us to put this out for bed. So we need, we need that design regardless if it's complete, rebuilt, or major repair.
Excellent. And what are the priorities? You mentioned you'd focus on three or four sites at first.
So the priorities would be the Matanzas Pier and Gulf Preserve and Kaluushahachi Regional Park. These are the three that we have as a priority for, to be Phase One, but we are open for any items that needs to be in the Phase One priority.
Thank you very much. That answers my questions.
Yeah.
At this time, do we have any other questions for staff?
I just want to make a comment. I think it became very apparent in the process of rebuilding how important our parks and preserves are for the enjoyment of the community. It's that stable place for them to go as a family, and as always, it takes time to put this together, but thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, at this time, I will open up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on item number 10? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to move item number? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioners.
Pendegras?
We have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Do we have any objections? No objections. Item moves forward unanimously four to zero. At this time, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Harner, please introduce item number 11.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is accept a state grant for Hurricane Ian and Nicole Recovery Project for Lover's Key and Benita Beach. I'd like to ask Mr. Adalini to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Roland Adalini, Natural Resources. This is accept a little over $1.1 million from Florida Department of Environmental Protection for Lover's Key and Benita Beach. This is part of their Hurricane Ian and Nicole Recovery Project. They suffered some losses during those storm events, and so basically, based on pre and post-storm surveys, they established how much material was lost. This will help offset those costs for that loss during those storms. As you well know, we have a larger project going for most of those beaches coming this coming year, so this will help offset some of those costs.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll open up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on item number 11? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners, do we have a motion to move item?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hammond. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioner Sandelli. Is there any further discussion at this time? The board, I've seen no further discussion at this, no, any objections? No objections. Item passes unanimously four to zero. At this time, Mr. Harner, please introduce item number 12.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is authorized issuing purchase orders to repair hurricane-related damages to WTE Plant. I like to, Waste Energy Plant, I'm sorry, I'd like to ask Mr. Whitehead to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Whitehead, Lee County, Solid Waste. This is issued purchase orders under the present contract with Covanta to pay for repairs that were conducted in the, after the hurricane. This includes temporary roof tarping to the ash house. It includes adding structure for temporary roofing the ash house. Essentially, these are temporary repairs that were done, and Covanta, under the contract, completes these repairs as a pass-through with no additional margin.
Thank you, Mr. White. Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
I want to ask about a tie, is that a statement about Florida State right there?
You're only the fifth person to ask.
I apologize.
Okay, Mr. Hammond, I would like to know myself, is that anything to do with Florida State?
My wife bought it, I can take no credit.
It looks great.
Thank you.
They should be in, yeah.
At this time, we'll open up public comment. Do we have any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner, any Commissioner want to make a motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
The item from Commissioner Sandelli. We have a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Motion to approve passes unanimously four to zero. Okay, Mr. Harner, please introduce item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the approved agreement with FDOT for Hurricane Ian Signal Repair Inspection, and I'd like to ask Mr. Price to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT, and my tie is certainly not a statement for Alabama, so we're clear. This hurricane recovery item is to approve a locally-funded agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for the construction engineering inspection services for the traffic signal repairs from Hurricane Ian. Through this agreement, AIM Engineering will oversee the construction of the traffic signal repairs through an FDOT contract at a cost of just over $150,000 to Lee County, which represents our 20% of that responsibility. Staff is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
You know, if I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Mr. Price, question about the, you know, as you're driving down, like Del Prado, you may see, still see a crooked light or two. Is this the contract that's going to clean all of that up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if people are wondering as they're driving down some of the major roads and still seeing a light that's not quite pointed correctly, this is the contract that'll start to take. Do they have a phasing? How do they, how are they going to work through the work?
So we have awarded that contract back in September. This is the inspection services to oversee that contractor. They're in the material acquisition phase right now, and we plan to hit the ground running starting on January 2nd with the repairs to start getting those straightened up and getting the spans replaced that need replacing. So any damage that was over $5,000 will be taken care of through that contract. Phasing-wise, we're looking at the hardest-hit areas that are going to take the most amount of man-hour. They're going to have multiple crews on, going through the whole project, so they have six months to finish the repairs once they start construction.
And this will be during season? Are you guys going to take into account, like, you know, rush hour and congestion and all that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. Most of this work we can do in the air without affecting traffic. Where there will be impacts to traffic, we're going to try to limit those to nighttime work, or basically, we might hold those until after Easter.
Perfect, okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Further comment?
Go ahead.
Everything we do takes time, and so we're in the process of managing expectations. You mentioned the availability of materials and so on and so forth. Seems like every time you turn on the TV, something's happening in another part of the country. Are we fairly confident that we're going to get the materials we needed in the timeline to get these repairs done?
The county is doing everything we can to make sure that the contractor has materials ready to go starting January 2nd.
Just want to say, thank you, Rob, for you and your staff for everything, and I know we've been doing this for 14 months from the day of the storm, so I just want to point out, this is something we've been talking about in the county, if somebody's watching this meeting and wondering, as you drive down Del Prado, any road down through Lee County, see the broken signs? We had over 5,000 signs, am I correct, Rob, that were damaged from the storm? And when we went in to apply for repairs to cost estimates for FEMA, for example, we had 5,000. And when you talk to staff, you'll find out the FEMA doesn't just see a four-by-four sign, you got 400 signs. Each one had to be independently reviewed. So it's a time consumption, so here we are 14 months later and just getting through this process. So it's very frustrating to some people to see why is this signs or the lights still damaged, but for us to get reimbursed, we had to go through this through FEMA, through the bureaucracy of DC, so, Rob, you want to touch on that a little bit?
I sure can. The signs are kind of a hybrid. Some of them are FEMA, some of them are Federal Highway, depending on what road they're on. Federal Highway requires us to group the signs in quarter-mile increments, and then you have to exceed that $5,000 limit for them to even participate. So you can imagine it would take a lot of damage to a bunch of signs for us to reach that $5,000. The signs are not that expensive. So we've been going through the process and getting our comments back from Federal Highway, and the county's ultimately going to end up fixing almost all of the signs ourselves without federal participation. The signs in Lehigh on your local streets, we are getting FEMA reimbursement for. So, but it is a very time-consuming process. We have over 18,000 support, sign supports. There's a lot of signs out there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, at this time, I will open up for public comment on item number 13. Does anyone wish to speak on item number 13? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have approval for, motion for approval from Commissioner Hammond. I have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Any objections? I see no objections. Item is approved unanimously four to zero. Okay, at this time... Okay, that concludes administrative agenda. So at this time, we start the public hearing at, so if there are three public hearings on the item agenda today, County Attorney, please introduce public hearing number one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Adams with the County Attorney's Office. This hearing's been properly advertised, and I have the affidavit of publication for your clerk. So at this point, the Lee County Sheriff's Office is going to give you a presentation on the animal abuser registry ordinance.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm Kate Welch from the Sheriff's Office, and I've met with you all over the past few months. Last year, Lee County had over 4,000 animal-related calls, and the Sheriff's Office made almost 40 felony arrests related to animal abuse. Hearing this, the sheriff wanted to know what else he could do to protect the innocent lives of animals in Lee County, and he heard that a few other Florida counties had registries similar to sex offender registries. And if this ordinance is passed, the animal abuser registry would be run by the Sheriff's Office Animal Cruelty Task Force. It would be free of cost to taxpayers. The ordinance will require anyone in Lee County, including all incorporated areas, to make sure they're not transferring ownership of animals to someone listed on the registry. This includes everyone, private individuals, pet shelters, pet stores, breeders. The sheriff hopes that implementation of this registry will help keep the lives of innocent animals safe so they don't fall back into the hands of abusers. Happy to answer any questions you have about the registry.
At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Thank you, the sheriff, for taking it upon yourself for doing this. This would be great for our community, and letting you know about Nash was here earlier. He would look good having his office down there so you could adopt Nash. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pendegras. Any further comment or questions? Okay, at this time, I will open up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none.
Move item.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pendegras, motion to approve with a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion?
Just hope that you'll give our regards to the sheriff and thank him very much for bringing this forward. I think it'll be a great program, and hopefully, it prevents, you know, any further abuse from taking place.
Okay, Commissioner Hammond, thank you. Any further comment? Okay, do we have any objections? I see no objection. Item moves unanimously four to zero. Police staff, could you please introduce item number two? Mr. County Attorney, please introduce item number two.
Good morning. Michael Jacob from the County Attorney's Office. I have your public hearing, item number two. This is a public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Salt Lake, Salt Leaf CDD. You recall, late 2023, the board approved the creation of this, the district. This request is to amend the boundaries to include 11.96 acres. The request meets the requirements of Chapter 190 Florida statute and is consistent with your Lee Comprehensive Plan. I have the affidavit of publication. If, enter that into the record now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Does anyone, any Commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, open this to public comment. Does anyone like to comment on item number two?
Can you get the doc camera up? I just want to get this here that has a little bit more of a visual that I can refer to in my public comments, please. I apologize for the quality of the recording, but... Marcia Ellis for the record, as I'm waiting for the visual to come up, I just want to say that there are concerns that we are not really heeding the lessons that we could learn from Hurricane Ian in terms of the effects and the protective role that things like wetlands and mangroves, open space, conservation areas can play on not just a large scale in terms of large conservation acquisitions and properties, but also on a small scale, a mitigation scale, not just to help us in terms of our flood protection, but also to offer water quality benefits as well. So this Salt Leaf, the Salt Leaf CDD has raised concerns, environmental concerns for sterile by, and also, you know, for the neighbors. I heard them at a recent forum speak about traffic concerns that are arising from increases in this development affecting them, their quality of life. And this proposal to take the wetland area and consider it for additional systems, facilities, infrastructure, security parks, indoor and outdoor recreation, cultural and educational uses, is concerning to me because just as easily, this section, these 19 acres, could have been committed for memorialization to remain wetlands and provide those benefits to the community for water protection, flooding protection, et cetera. So I think that we are really moving in the wrong direction by allowing this to occur because once the visual does come up, you're going to see clearly with your own eyes that these wetlands are circling around this development and offer a protective function. That is not the direction that we want to be moving, either on a large scale or on a small scale. We want to encourage responsibility with our community development districts, okay? Because you have a developmental, community development district doesn't mean that you get special privileges to destroy the environment. That's not what it means. It doesn't mean that you get a blank check to take as much water as you might want to keep your pond pretty to the expense of your neighbors. And to me, this is the wrong direction. I'm still waiting for my visual. Okay, so I'm going to ask that if you, if you have not, and I would assume that you have had the opportunity to review the agenda accompanying information, that you'll see very clearly what I'm speaking about.
Marcia, I apologize for that not getting up fast enough, but your time is up.
All right.
Anyone else would like to speak on item number two? Would you happen to be James Morris? No, I have a comment on a public hearing, but they did not do the item number, so I don't want to miss that. So, anyone, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Jared Earlywine. I'm with QTAC Rock here on behalf of the petitioner. Just by way of response to the comment, I understand what Ms. Ellis is saying. That said, what we're considering here today is just the community development district. Any community is either going to have a homeowner association or a CDD that's going to manage that infrastructure, and a CDD is a much better operation-maintenance entity than a homeowner association in terms of taking care of wetlands and other sensitive environmental structures, where you have the ability to get FEMA and statewide mutual aid in terms of, whereas a homeowner association can't get those types of things. Because the CDD is a governmental entity, we can issue tax exempt bonds to finance repairs of stormwater systems. We can take out tax exempt loans for that purpose. We can also collect our assessments on the tax roll, and in fact, I've got a letter from one of the water management districts saying that a CDD is a much better operation-maintenance entity than an HOA in terms of taking care of these sensitive environmental structures. So what we're talking about today is just expanding the boundaries of the existing CDD to include these additional 20 acres. It has nothing to do with the project approvals, which are a completely separate item, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time? All right, Mr. Baracco?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Carl Barack, for the record, I serve as a Salt Leaf CDD District Engineer, and I just want to let you know I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other pub, public comment at this time on item number two? Okay, seeing none. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move the item, I just have some comments to.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendegras. We have a second from Commissioner Hammond. Would we have any other further discussion, Commissioner?
Yeah, just want to make sure everybody understands for the record that heard the meeting this morning. So this is an expansion of the current CDD. This is, next is, this is basically a golf course property where they're building, the Benita Springs part of the portion of the property, some like 300 or 400-foot high-rise towers that do rest Carlos's residences and some other development. There's already been existing for 30 years, the prior golf course. This is expansion where they can actually do the CDD work, like the gentleman said, collect funds and that off the ever-owing taxes to provide infrastructure for that[1780.36] collect funds and that off the ever-on taxes to provide infrastructure for that area. That's all this is. It's not approving any other future expansion of any other wetlands or anything like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pendergrass. Do we have any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any objections? Okay, seeing none. Passed unanimously, four to zero. Mr. County Attorney, please introduce item number three. Miss County Attorney, I stand corrected.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Swindle with the County Attorney's Office. I have your third public hearing this morning, and this has been adequately advertised. This public hearing is to approve the issuance of single-family mortgage revenue bonds by the Housing Finance Authority of Lee County in an amount not to exceed $50 million. While your approval is necessary to secure the tax-exempt status of these bonds, this action does not create a financial or administrative responsibility on the part of Lee County. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, seeing none. I will open up for public comment. Does anyone want to make, have any comments on item number three? Okay, seeing none. Anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll gladly make the motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Hammond. We have a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Is there any other further discussion?
Just one comment that, you know, this is something that, while, you know, we kind of, we highlight the fact that it's not going to be a liability of the board. It is something that I think the board should be proud of as, you know, it's an effort that the Housing Finance Authority is undertaking to improve affordable housing in our area. I think there's not a single one of us who hears about the affordable housing issue on an almost daily basis. You know, we know our employees have dealt with higher rent prices. And obviously, when you look at just a single-family home starting out at $350,000 these days, that's a tough, I think $70,000 for a down payment is tough for any couple to save up for, for anybody to save up for. So, you know, this is $50 million of loans that will now be able to go out that hopefully will give the banks the assurance that they need to make loans to folks so that they can get their first home. And hopefully, we'll start to see the prices come down and people to be able to afford them.
Agreed. Any further comments, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any objections? No objections. Item number three passes unanimously, four to zero. Okay. Okay, walk-ons and carry-ons. If there are no walk-ons or carry-on overs, do we have any? We do not have any? Okay. Moving to Commissioner items. Do we have any Commissioner items? I do have one. Commissioner item? I gotta find it? Okay, at this time, we, I'd like to discuss the Board of County Commissioner liaison appointments to the Value Adjustment Board. I am, I am being, let's see. I am, I am going to be on the Value Adjustment Board, and also Commissioner Hammond will be on the Value Adjustment Board. Do we need to have, how do we move forward with that, first one done?
Ms. Chairman, if those are the nominees, it would require a motion, a second, and a vote for the board as the statute requires, an election by the board as opposed to merely a chairman's appointment. So a motion and a second, please.
I'll make that motion on behalf of the chair.
Okay, and we have a second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hammond and a second from Commissioner Sandelli. And any public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any objections? No objections. Okay. Passed unanimously, four to zero. Do we have to do the second now? Or that, that's it?
I think that's all good.
That it? Okay, making sure. Okay. First one of those I've done, so please bear with me. Okay. Uh-oh. I totally lost my...
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner?
I didn't have a Commissioner item today, but I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays for this year. We have no other meetings rest this month. So again, thank you for everything you do in our community and all the employees, I think, for all your hard work throughout the year. Look forward to a good year next year. So again, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Okay, at this time, we have no other Commissioner items. County Manager, will you recognize?
Oh, just, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to also give a shout-out real quick. Can we do shout-outs? So the, I wanted to just really highlight the county employees. You know, there's a radio station that does an effort called 10,000 for the troops every year around the holiday time, and they send cards to folks who are serving overseas so that they can get some sort of a warm holiday greeting from back home. Well, our county staff helped us collect over 6,000 cards that we took to Drew Steele, to the radio station. And so I just wanted to say thanks, especially to the Parks and Rec folks who helped with that and any of the other departments that helped out with that. I just really, you know, we're led, actually. Our county manager's a veteran. And then, sitting right there at his right hand is Glenn, who's also another Navy veteran as well. And anybody else who served, just thank you for your service, first of all. And thank you very much to our team for helping with those cards. It's a huge effort, and I know that the troops, when they open those, will be very, very pleased.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Okay, that concludes public appointments. At this time, County Manager items. Mr. Horner, do you have any County Manager items?
Actually, we still have appointments to... It's all good.
Okay. Do we have any appointments? Ms. Hammond, do you have any appointments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a new appointment of Marsha Dennison from North Fort Myers to the Mobile Manor O and M MSBU, and a reappointment of Dusty Gardner to the local planning agency.
Second.
Any objections? Objections? Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second, so unanimous. Public comment? Any public comment? No public comment? Okay. Motion moves unanimously, four to zero. Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, I have some reappointments. I have a new appointment of Bridgette DeWalt for the Class Act, reappointment of Anne Gomez for Pine Manor Streetlight District, reappointment of Ray Blacksmith to the LPA Local Planning Agency, reappointment of Catherine Bonwell to Historic Preservation, reappointment of Nisa Alexis for the Historical Preservation, reappointment of Richard Durling, Board of Justice Appeals.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. I'll open public comment. Any public comment? No public comment? Any objections? No objections. Item moves four to zero. Commissioner Sandelli, do you have any?
I have three reappointments. The first is Stephen Mortenson to the Northeast Hurricane Bay MSTU. The second is David Brower. It's a reappointment, Northeast Hurricane Bay MSTU. And Stan Stoudt, as a reappointment at the local planning agency.
Commissioner Sandelli, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Hammond. Any public comment? No public comment. Passes, no objections, four to zero. I have a reappointment as well for Leonard Blair to the Russell Park Streetlight Unit Committee. Do you have a motion?
I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hammond and a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Opened public comment. Any public comment? I see none. Any objections? No objections. Item moves four to zero. Okay. Now, Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On November 1st, the board held its strategic planning session. On November 7th, the board approved those items coming out of the strategic planning session. So today, I would just like to provide an update as to where we are currently in the process. A number, over a number of planning sessions, we have talked about expediting road projects. That is still ongoing. Also, during the strategic planning session, the discussion was to have more communication regarding road projects. We are currently in the process of developing signage and more information related to our road projects. Unfortunately, when it comes to the state, we are unable to put those signs up. But we will work on other alternatives for information and education on those road projects as well. State Road AD Corridor redevelopment plan, we are coming back to the board for a workshop in the spring. The mitigation bank credits that we're having issues with regarding our road projects, we are working with the County Attorney's Office and are currently crafting some language to bring back to the board for review, to send a letter out. The septic alternatives, we are exploring grant opportunities. We're working on our CIP as well as engaging with municipalities and FGUA. We recently met with FGUA last week, and they provided us a number of, provided us a wealth of information, which was greatly appreciated. On our regional water supply, the NOFA goes out today. We will have those applications back in March, and we believe we will be in front of the board in April for that. On the Civic Center, today we have the workshop, which, now we're announcing that as well. So that takes care of two things. For EMS, the board already approved the positions. That went before the board, I believe, on the 17th. And the long-term plan, we'll be coming back to the board for a workshop in the second quarter. We discussed one of the stations today, and we're continuing to design on the four stations in the CIP that's underway. And then investing alternative delivery methods such as telehealth and urgent care, again, that is underway. A more clear budget guidance, we will be sending out that letter that the board directed us to, to all the constitutionals. And then, on the revenue projections and clearly communicate expense management steps, that'll be happening March of this, of this coming year. So that's the current update. I would hope to bring back an update to you again in the next quarter.
Okay, County Manager, if that concludes the items, do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment? That concludes County Commissioner, County Manager items. County Attorney, do you have any items, Ms. Welch?
No, sir. Nothing further for the board's consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have two comment cards on the workshop. Marsha Ellis.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today, Marsha Ellis, for the record. I just wanted to say that I was anticipating that there would be some email communications. As a member of the public, I participated in all the opportunities to give public input regarding the Civic Center, the in-person meeting in North Fort Myers, here in your chambers on several occasions, completing the survey, giving extensive written comment a number of times. And there was no reaching out from the county regarding notifying me to put a workshop today right in the middle of the holiday season, when we have a lot of other things to look at, to read, to prepare comments for. And I think that this, this is concerning. Similarly, I was anticipating communications regarding the release of the Recovery Task Force information. Same issue. Those communications were not forthcoming. Those were, again, supposedly going to all the people who participated in the forums and who had shown interest, completed surveys, given comments previously, and I see this as a gap. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Also, Brad Maloney?
Brad Maloney with the Charity Pros. I did have two separate comments. I had one on the workshop, but I also had just a matter of shout-out that I'd like to give if I can do that at this time. It was just, it was just a thank you to the board and to staff and to Parks and Rec. We recently had a very successful community event at Hammond Stadium and where we were able to honor some of the hurricane heroes in our community. You know, not all heroes wear capes. So we had some great organizations and people. A special shout-out to the assistants from Commissioner Sandelli, Commissioner Wayne, Mayor Anderson, Mayor Allers, who was all part of the presentation of, explaining to folks what kind of heroes we have throughout our community. And more importantly, we're excited to raise $60,000 for local charities. That's what the Charity Pros do. We presented those checks last week at a, at a function at The Ranch for the Tabarini Foundation, Children's Music Foundation, which provides lessons and instruments to all kids throughout the county that want to get into music but can't afford it, and lessons to the School of Rock, and also to the Music Alive Southwest Florida, which provided scholarships to local musicians, mostly from the beach area, that lost their instruments, their cars, their houses, and their jobs, of course, by the closing of all the live entertainment venues due to the hurricanes. So, and the additional $20,000 went to the Megan's Wish Fund, which provide kids in Lee County with special grants to provide wishes for kids that are struggling with personal and family issues and are looking for a getaway from that. So I just wanted to thank everybody for the help. It was great to work with the county and the Parks and Rec. It was just a fantastic experience. And I know the Mighty Muscles and the Minnesota Twins were also very good to work with, so thank you for that. If I can just mention the, for the upcoming workshop, again, thank you for taking up the Civic Center project. I first met with Commissioner Hammond and staff back in March of 2022 with an informal presentation of the redevelopment of the grounds, featuring an amphitheater, which was the number-one choice of the community in the recent staff survey. So we look forward to an opportunity to hopefully submit a comprehensive plan to the board, however that program's going to work out, to help explain some of the things that we bring to the project, how the Charity Pros can build a state-of-the-art amphitheater with zero tax dollars, how successful agricultural programs, fairs, and amphitheaters are when they come together on the same grounds. We only have to look as far as Tampa and West Palm, where they have successful 4-H programs, fairgrounds, and an amphitheater all on the same site. How our plan centers around the ongoing use of the 4-H, FFA, and the fair, and how the Charity Pros will financially support the growth and development of the programs through our charity partner revenue share. How our plan provides dedicated space for the growth...
Unfortunately, you are out of time.
Oh, I thought I had two separate...
Two separate items?
Two separate items.
One. It was just one, unfortunately.
Okay.
I don't have one card, and it was discussion on the workshop.
Yeah, I thought there was always an opportunity to speak on just a public matter. So I thought it was too separate.
Time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, anyone else wish to speak, public comment, that did not produce a card, provide a card? Okay, seeing none? I'd like to announce the workshop at 1:30 PM today. Location is 2120 Second Street, Conference Room 118. Subject will be Lee County Civic Center complex. Is there any other further discussion or any further business in front of us? Okay, seeing none? Return.